Good evening. Welcome to the Village of Marinerick. February fourteenth, Happy Valentine's Day. Board of Trustees' Work Session. May I please have a motion to open the meeting?
Don't move.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adoption of agenda. If you want to adopt the agenda, make a motion.
Don't move.
I second that.
What we call it. Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Murphy?
No.
All business. Enforcement of Multiple Dwelling Law. Waiting additional information. Jerry? Where'd Jerry go? You want to call Jerry?
I'm here, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Better.
Okay, there's no additional information on that?
No, there's no additional information. And I wouldn't even be able to tell you what information we're actually waiting for.
But how's the ad hoc committee going?
For multiple dwelling law? I don't have an ad hoc committee for multiple.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
At rental registration.
I got, I got, I got. Okay. Anybody have any comments on the multiple dwelling law?
Yeah, the question is, we have a law of the books. And it's not being enforced. So, the question is, why? That's what, that's how this got onto the agenda. Now, I understand that there are, there are sections of the multiple dwellings law that are not as strict as the Unified Building Code. And so, when that happens with other codes, you just enforce the strictest of the, of whatever the conflicting laws are and keep on going. But we don't do that. So, the question is, why?
Okay, just, may I ask, what is your assertion that we don't do that?
I can't hear you, Tom.
What, what are the instances that we don't do that? I mean, what are you asserting?
Setbacks is one. I mean, this was all laid out originally when this went on to the agenda. But setbacks was one of the larger issues here. There are other areas within that as well.
Okay, address two items. So, the first, one of the things that we, I've spoken with the building inspector about, and what we're going to be requiring applicants is that, going forward, they're going to have to provide an analysis of the requirements under the dwelling law and the requirements under the building code, kind of like you'd have a zoning schedule to demonstrate, you know, how you're complying. So, we are starting to see that. The second part is, you know, we've recommended, you know, rescinding the section of the village code. I think what's been asked for is an analysis of the multiple dwelling law compared to the Uniform Building Code. That, that's a major undertaking. And we're talking, I think, you know, something like fifteen, sixteen chapters in the multiple dwelling law in the building code. Multiple books, multiple chapters. That's a significant analysis.
Well, let me ask a question, Dan. If you're requiring applicants to show that they're in compliance with the zoning code and the building code, why, and part of the, part of our zoning code is the adoption of the multiple dwellings law?
That's not part of zoning code. Multiple dwelling law is not part of our zoning code. I believe it's part of, after 132, the building code. But regardless.
Okay, forgive me. So, if it's adopted as part of the building code, and you're asking applicants to show that they are in compliance, why would they not, you not do that for the, then put the burden on them to show where it is? And if there's something that is more stricter in that than in another code, that they are in compliance or not, and if it's less, they're adhering to the other one, which is more, you know, much more strict.
That's what we've initiated.
Say again?
We've initiated that, to have them provide that analysis for us.
Including the multiple dwellings law.
Correct.
Okay, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
So, is there, is there an ETA on getting the information?
I'll, I'll talk with the building department, but between, you know.
I understand, I understand the time, but it is on their agenda and they're working on it?
Yes, it is. I'll follow up with them this week to try and nail that at a better timeline.
Okay, thank you. One B, Use of American Rescue Plan Funds. Jerry?
It would, it would be, it would be helpful if we had the final list from the Board of Trustees with their comfort level on the items that we presented last month. I think, and I saw in emails that River Gauges, we're going to replace the food stabilization program that the staff presented. I think that's a great idea. But we want to move forward with starting to develop plans for the affordable housing, which we're going to be following. As far as the Affordable Housing Grant Program, we're going to be following a grant program that the New York, that New York State already has in place. The Displaced Worker Initiative, broadband infrastructure, and then continuing to, to put money towards the sewer rehabilitation project, which we're already, we're almost finalizing, we're almost there to finalize the second phase of that project. And then, of course, the items that were taken off, the one item that was taken off was reinstating the deferred salaries. That was taken care of.
That was taken care of, but with another pot of money.
So, I think where, I think Jerry wasn't here last time. And, and so, I think where we are is, five weeks ago, because we have been a long gap, we had kind of, we had gotten, we'd made some changes and some recommendations, and those were in the minutes. And so, they have to get put into some sort of a memo. Last time, we talked about seeing if we could accommodate the gauges. Because that seemed, that would give real-time information to people about flooding. And I think we were trying to explain, just, we can't simply just give money to people to upgrade apartments. There's a whole process about how we give out money as a government. And how it, right. And so, I think what we had in the initial memo was a little loosey-goosey. I mean, it was just the idea, not how we would implement it. And you've subsequently found a program that we can do it through. Is that correct?
Is that the Affordable Housing Grant?
Yeah, I mean.
I thought we were talking about doing a program that was kind of a competition and a grant program based upon applications that people put in.
Right, but we can't administer it. There has to be some other group that does it, because there has to be accountability for how the units get, how those units are, are given, either sold or rented to people. It's like, if there's.
That, that's correct. But I thought that that was a given. And that the people who were going to make applications for the grant, that would be part of the, you know, as a worthy RP for the grant.
As far as, as far as the grant structure, we talked at the staff level of copying the New York State Home Program, which is a small rental development initiative. They're short for, short for, they use the acronym SRDI. And if you look it up, it's pretty close to what we're looking for as far as 100% affordable housing development or creation, you know, through rehabilitation. So, the state already has a list of forms that, that we could utilize, or at least borrow, that would allow us to create this, this grant program. And then, hopefully, have a local or Westchester community, you know, take care of the actual construction or rehabilitation.
I, I think what the discussion was last time also, is that we are approving the ideas, and then the staff is going to develop plans for those ideas. But they just wanted kind of guidance. So, I, I don't think that we have to work out every aspect of it. At the end of the day, you know, it's up to them to make sure that this is something that is, you know, doable and fundable and legal use of the funds in it. I think that they understand those constrictions.
Yeah, ultimately, you know, these are fiscal policy matters. So, what we're asking is for a resolution that would commemorate and, you know, identify specifically the board's priorities, so we can move forward with developing those programs. I, you know, I see trustee DeFore raises hand. I know he advocated for stormwater mitigation, stormwater flooding mitigation at the last meeting. So, I know that was another idea that was presented. I think that's why I want to kind of understand and get a flavor with an official resolution, letting us know what those policy imperatives and recommendations are from the board.
Okay. Okay, so if we take the $50,000, that was the food stabilization program, and put that toward river gauges, that, and, you know, whatever's left over, I, I don't know if the broadband infrastructure of $200,000 is going to make a dent in anything. So, one of the things I thought about, and I'll throw this out, is taking $100,000 from the broadband infrastructure and putting that toward the Affordable Housing Grant, making that 200 grand, and taking another 100 grand from the broadband infrastructure, and putting that toward some sort of a flood initiative that the staff can work out. So, that way, you'd have 150 toward flooding, 200 toward affordable housing, 100 toward displaced workforce initiative, and four and a half toward the sewer rehabilitation project. Again, we have another $30,000 floating around, because we did not use this money for the deferred salary increase.
But I, and I think to your point, Dan was talking about a survey that the county is doing about a bigger broadband project.
Okay.
There might be another way of getting broadband.
Right, so, I mean, we've been kicking this around for a while. I mean, can we just make, you know, a decision on this tonight? Just how we allocate the money, and then allow staff to come up with implementation of that allocation. And that's nice alliteration. And then, that could come back to us. So, my proposal is 200 for affordable, 100 for displaced workforce, 150 for flooding, 450 for sewer. And then, you know, we put the $330,000 to, you know, whatever the board feels that would be the best use.
And we, Dan.
Go ahead, Dan, that I'll do a little. Dan, you're muted. Dan, you're muted.
I think it would be helpful if at the next work session, staff could provide a bullet outline for implementation of the concepts involved for with the money allocation. And that, that would, I think, help move this along. You're not going to get this, all the specifics. But I think, you know, just simply saying, we're going to do this for A, B, or C. We like the concept of A, B, C, D, or whatever it is. But I think we need a little bit more information before we say that's, you know, let's go forward with that. And it's, to me, you know, I think that we talked about that at the last meeting. You know, when we say affordable housing, you know, what are we talking about? And I think so, if we can have, you know, maybe four or five bullet points that, you know, are the objectives of that, the same with broadband, et cetera. I, you know, same with river gauges, et cetera. I think that makes it a lot more meaningful. And that's what I'd like to just, following up on what yours do.
In some substance, that's what I said. I, I said, you know, we give them the paths, and they come back to us with how they would implement the paths. Victor, go ahead.
No, no, I think Mr. Natchez is finishing. So, I'll go after him, Mr. Natchez. I think he had, he had started to say something.
Oh, go ahead, Victor.
All right. I think that's where the, probably the difference, the difference in views are. Let me try to put this as simple as I can. We typically get memos outlining an issue like happened here. Then you get feedback from the board. And what happens then is you get an update, update memo. That is, I think, what's happening here. We don't, we're not getting that update memo or that additional information like Jerry just explained. We have received more information on those affordable housing. Then, then you are, you get to a point, this is an iterative process, where you get to a point where you say, okay, those are the five lines, and this is the price tag, and this is how it will be implemented. Because then we'll, we'll, we can make those fiscal decisions, as Dan was saying. And then, we're not stuck when we have the resolution in front of us for the budget. So, I do think, as simple as updating this with the information, so we're really comfortable and not just, not just bound, but, but yes, we'll do this, this, this tax here, and then they're going to implement it. Because I think they, that's where the difference is, I find with the mayor, that I think, yes, the administration, the manager is going to implement these projects. But we really have to give them a clear guidance on how the plan is supposed to work. What's the purpose? That is probably legal, that it has new elements. So, the iterative process is where we're not, where we're not finding, I think, an update on, on where we stand and how it could be implemented, that could really help us. And then, we can nail the decision.
Next one, Luke.
All right. My observation is that this has found money, and these are intractable, very serious intractable problems, and it's a drop in the bucket. So, we're just, we're, we're going to split up some money that we've, that's been dropped in our laps, and we want to put it where it'll do the most good. So, I don't think we should overthink it, because we're not going to fix any of these problems with this, this modest amount of cash. My question for Jerry is, does the sewer need all that, all that 450 that you're talking about?
Below the sewer, the current job that we're working on right now is approximately 5.5 million, for which, for which we received the almost $5 million grant, but we have a significant match on that grant of 1.6 million. So, if we've got 450 dedicated to covering that match in this round of funding, and then we have another 930,000 coming to us June, or announced to be coming to us, or announced that it should come to us June of 2020, two or three, which one is it, Dan?
This year. It'll, it'll be received in June of this year.
June of this year, we got another $930,000 problem, a good problem. We have to deal with it. So, the 450 plus the 930,000, if we put all of that money towards the sewer, in essence, we've, we've cleaned up most of our match for this grant that we received. Then Phase Two of the sewer project is approximately 2.5 million. Those are another three metered areas that we're currently doing the investigation on, that we're almost wrapped up on. So.
So, I guess the true answer is, yes, you need the money.
You need the money. But, but we do have an updated memo, which, and I'm sorry, it doesn't have a lot of detail, and that's on purpose, only because I had COVID during the last meeting. But Dan wrote a memo that we talked about a little bit dated February 10. And so, I have some scribbled notes on that memo now. If we're going to increase affordable housing, that's good. That's, 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 that clears that up. Displaced worker is still something on here, because it's not on the memo. And it wasn't, yeah, Victor, go ahead.
I was going to just interrupt very briefly. What, we can make decisions on if it's 500 or 600, once we get the information. But now, putting those numbers around, I think it's useful that the mayor threw that proposition out. But let's not get stuck with that, because then we're, we, with the background.
Let me be clear about something. I was never saying that these numbers and, and that idea meant that we weren't going to have a review process on how the money is finally implemented. That was never my intent, and it actually wasn't what I said. What I'm saying is, is that they can't come up with a program unless we give them a parameter of what we're willing to spend on the program. You, you can't make it all nebulous. Like, and, and I, I don't know if you want to really do the broadband infrastructure. And if not, if you want to do it, fine, leave it in there, and we'll just go merrily along, and we'll just keep, you know, doing this every time. But if, if the broadband infrastructure isn't something that we think is going to be effective at $200,000, something that might cost, you know, multi-million dollars at the end of the day, then, all I'm saying is, let's take that item out and reallocate that money. And that is just the decision I'm asking for tonight.
So, Mayor, we wrote two memos, January 6th, where we have several items. And then, Dan wrote another memo to me on, on February 10. On that memo, based on the interpretation from the January 28th meeting, affordable housing is still something that the board wants us to consider, wants to consider. Broadband is on there. Displaced worker program is not on this memo. So, if I'm reading both memos, it looks like it was dropped at the January 28th meeting, which unfortunately I missed. And there's sewer rehab, and then there's stormwater, which was not on the original memo.
Correct.
And then, food stabilization was replaced with river gauges, which is viable. That's, that's, there's, that's, that's actually an awesome recommendation and very worthwhile. So, what I'm looking at is affordable housing. On the next memo, where we provide the board the details that they're looking for, affordable housing, sanitary sewer rehabilitation, stormwater and flooding issues, which include river gauges. And then, is displaced worker, displaced worker program or an initiative still something the board wants us to consider? Or was that dropped from the original meeting to the, you know, the last board meeting?
If I can clarify, at the last board meeting, it was dropped and replaced with the river gauges. The river gauges were not lumped into this stormwater issue. It was done as.
And I'm in favor of the concepts that have been set forth. But when we talk about affordable housing, I'm not sure, you know, what we're talking about. The biggest problem we have with affordable housing is, most of it seems to go to the 80% level, where the biggest need is at the 40% level. The A, Y, and we're, and we're not, we haven't done that. So, what I would, what I would envision, if, if you feel that you could do this by the next meeting, is give four or five bullet points on each one of these things of what it's accomplished in a budget. And then, we can say, yeah, go do that and get to the specific program. We will approve the specific program. But I just don't want to say affordable housing, you know, and not have it aimed at, at what we want to accomplish. It's partnering with, you know, with firms or others as us undertaking for, you know, aimed at something. You know, I would love it all aimed at 40%. I don't know if the entire board would go with that, but.
So, let the, let the board.
Those are the types of, I'm sorry.
If I could, the board would decide on what percentage of affordability. But let me read you, if I could, just, just give me a 30 seconds to read three sentences. And I just want to gauge to see if the board is comfortable with these three sentences. "Smaller rental projects tend to generate less revenue and are at a high risk of financial stability due to vacancy." "The program that we're thinking about, which is a copying a New York State program, is designed to assist nonprofit owners of rental housing to acquire, rehabilitate, and newly construct their own long-term affordable apartments. Considerations are made to alleviate the upfront costs of applications." Does that feel like something that we can proceed with?
It's like something I would like to read about.
Okay, yes.
I like it, I would like to read about it.
Okay, good, okay, good.
An informed decision, but, but.
Just an idea, yes. Good. Yeah, Dan.
I, I think that's great, but I would like it aimed at something. So, it's just saying affordable. If, if we're to, whatever the money is, is aimed at 80%, I'd be. Okay, I would say that that would, that's not really, there are a lot of programs that do that. You know, and us just to be supplementing those programs don't get us to our, our biggest need. So, that, that's what I'm looking, I'm looking for some guidance in the structure that aims at a certain, you know, certain things. That's what I'm suggesting.
And I'm getting guidance by talking to you.
Go ahead, Luke. I think, Dan, you'll get that when, when they come back. If I understand this, and I may be, be misinterpreting this, we're asking them, you know, Jerry, what can you do with $200,000 in the area of affordable housing? And you come back with some proposals, and then we play with that. Is that about right?
That's correct. That's correct. At the level, and, but what, but what trustee Natchez is saying is helping us, because we can get a feel of what level of affordability fills in the gap that all those other programs don't do. We can do that.
You could write that into the grant. We're looking to reach the lowest level of affordability.
That's correct.
It's all better than a grant, bang, you're done.
We can do that.
Like the deepest level, the, the most deeply affordable.
The most deeply affordable, right.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the term of art.
Jerry, do you have an idea of what we need to do here?
I do, I have a better idea. But I need to vet, I need to still, I need to still have one question answered. Do we continue to use 100,000 for displaced workforce initiative? Or was that dropped at the January 28th meeting? And if it was, that's fine, because the river gauges were replaced, I'm sorry, food stabilization program were replaced by river gauges, which we're moving forward with. But is displaced workforce initiative still something, or are we dropping that?
I would, I would think at this point, I would rather put the money into affordable housing.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. That, that's, that's you guys in the room. Anyone else, whatever, whatever you want.
I, I, you know, I, I had envisioned that we were going to try and seeds, use, use some of our affordable housing money as seed money. And the program that you're describing seems like it would do that. Because we can't be the affordable housing developers. We need to work with a, an affordable housing.
That's correct. But it's seed money, and it helps them with those hard to find, that, that hard to find money for all those upfront costs that they're hit with, right?
So, affordable housing is 300 grand now?
Looks like it.
Okay.
I just, and I, this is like one last question. I know we have a deadline by which the money has to be spent, but can it be allocated?
So, no, so we have a, we have a deadline for the proposal, which is April of this year.
It doesn't have to.
I think, I think we have four years to spend the money.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be spent by.
The housing isn't, isn't going to be quick.
Yep, that's correct.
All right.
Thank.
Can we move on?
Excellent, thank you.
Rental registration program, Jerry, you got nothing on that?
So, Mayor, I'm working on a draft of the rental registration proposal. I'll share it with Mark and Bob before the next meeting, probably a week before the next meeting, so that they can look at it and fill in all of the all of, and make all the corrections from my New Jersey law to my New York law knowledge. And then, we can get this on the next meeting for, for a draft look. But it's very similar to what I created for Hammington, so.
Okay.
Well, you guys already have a template, so.
Anybody have any questions for Jerry or not?
Yeah, I do. Can you tell me how this changes the requirements that we already have for the, for safety issues for all, for all rental units?
It's a new requirement. What it does is, it requires us to go and inspect all rental units annually on a registration, on a fee-based registration.
I understand that there's no fee-based registration at the moment. But aren't we allowed to do that now?
No, there's no rental.
Isn't the fire, the fire code require us to do that for safety?
No, no, there's no registration of rentals in the village.
I, I understand there's no registration. That wasn't, you know, whether they, you don't, that's not my question. I thought we already are required to have our code enforcement officer annually inspect rental apartments. Am I, I'm. Inspect rental apartments. Am I, am I miss, am I misinformed in that?
Not in this form.
I I think that the code enforcement officer inspects the building. He doesn't go into the apartments and he doesn't know how many apartments there are. And, you know, he'll go in, make sure that there's, depending upon the size of the building. Make sure that there are emergency lights, make sure that there are fire extinguishers. Thank God they have. Make sure that they're in the hallway, in the hallway, that there are smoke detectors or heat detectors. Depending upon what the code requires, but it it they don't inspect the units.
We have to inspect the units. To make sure that they're up to a livable standard. That's where we're able to get the most bang for our buck that way. Okay.
Thank you. Zoning strategies to encourage and support all affordable housing developments. I just want to talk about one thing, or two things about this tonight that. Are really pressing. In Governor Hokel's budget. There are a couple of proposals. And just take those, let's not talk about the worth or the the validity of the proposals, but the proposals themselves. Really undercut home rule and zoning. What they do is they override home rule. On the issue of ADUs and they override home rule on transit oriented development. The goal. Well, the the stated goal is one that I believe in, creating more affordable housing. What the ADU would allow is anybody who lives in a one-family zone. Can add an accessory unit as of right. The community couldn't stop it. I I I think that that's not what we want. In Mamaronek and it also doesn't have any allowances for planning. And zoning considerations about what that would entail to the community. It would just be, this is what you have to do. But my biggest gripe with the ADUs is that. It does not require. That they be rented as affordable units. So if the, if the quest is to create more affordable housing. Which is a quest that I agree with. I don't think this gets you. And in some instances, the apartments can be up to 1,500 square feet. Now, in the Village of Mamaronek, 1,500 square feet is a three-bedroom apartment. Which is going to rent from anywhere from 3,500 to $4,000 easy. And that's just not affordable. Especially to people with two children and a husband and a wife. Or whatever your family arranged for this. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. Categorize it like that. So. The problem is it's in with the budget. So the budget passes, this passes, which makes it very hard for elective representatives. To vote against it because there's so much in the budget, right? And the reason they did this is because if if you're from Schenectady. And you vote against it, against this, you also voted against, you know, the new sewer treatment plant in Schenectady. Because that was in the budget too. So they put it all into this catch-all budget. And it's either vote up or vote down. Now, I've had discussions with Shelley Mayer and with Steve Otis. And I voiced my concerns. I'm supposed to meet with Pete Harkman. Mr. Senator Harkman has a bill on ADUs, which is very similar to what the governor is doing. And, you know, my contention is if we can't get it out of the budget, at least have affordability requirements built in. So that it actually, you know, if if this is a blunt instrument. To create affordable housing, that's actually affordable at the end of the day. And the other measure, the TOD measure. So say you have an area. That's that one family zone right now. You can create one acre of that area, whatever it is, buy six houses, create an acre of that area. And on that acre, you can build 25 apartment, apartment building. In an area that's zoned for one family or two families. So, and 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 this would be, you know, non-negotiable. It usurps our zoning authority. And I'm going to throw this to the village attorney. Have I misspoken about this?
No, Mayor, not that, not to my understanding. I'm trying, I found the affordable housing, the ADU law. I'm still looking in the budget for the 25 units to the acre, but I'm told it's there.
Yeah, I'm told it's almost identical.
Within a half mile of a train station.
Then a half mile of a transit, but it doesn't say, you know, the center line of the train station. Right? It does a train station. So our train station is probably two tenths of a mile. So you go a half a mile from the Ryanneck side, you go a half a mile from the town of Mamaronek side. Yet, and and you draw a radius around it. You've got a lot of villages. You know, I understand what this is coming from. You know, this is coming from, because we got places like Bedford, New York, which has four-acre zoning. And, you know, you can very much make the argument that that four-acre zoning was created. To, you know, preclude people of limited means from being in that community. But, you know, they're using. They're using a sledgehammer in Mamaronek to kill a fly. And I think we should have more affordable housing, but I don't think that this is the way to do it, because it, to me, I don't see how it creates affordable housing. It just creates more housing. So I wanted the board to be aware of this. I I'm going to be speaking to Pete Harkman. I I will reach out to the governor's office. I don't know if I'll hear back, but Senator Harkman's staff was very solicitous today. And saying that Senator Harkman will call me and he, I I know Senator Harkman a long time. He's a good man and I'm sure he's doing this for the right reasons, but I just don't think his approach will. Reach the goal that he wants to reach. So I just wanted to make you aware of that and I hope.
The Senator's bill, Senator Harkman's bill is just about affordable ADUs. It's not about the TOD. The TOD is in the governor's budget.
Yes, yes.
And that's, you know, that's.
But the, but Senator Harkman's bill. Has been also, you know, you know, the governor doesn't call it Senator Harkman's bill, but she has all of the.
Very similar. I'm just saying, he's been a proponent of these ADUs.
Yes.
The TOD is a whole different.
And Pete has been, Pete has been a proponent of that for years. Like a new development to Senator Harkman, but now it's got real legs because the governor's putting it. In her budget and, you know, it's it's an election year, right? The governor is running for election, so. Without going out on a limb, I I would say that, you know, I'm sure there are, you know, gubernatorial politics involved. In this too. So I I I'm very fearful. That this will be the first step to camel's nose under the tent to just getting rid of local zoning. And, you know, what works, you know, in Mamaronek, isn't going to work in Benhampton. And it isn't going to work in, I don't know, Green County, New York, or, you know, Schenectady, you know, so it's. It's really. Could be a a time bomb in this community and in communities like the Village of Mamaronek. I was on a call yesterday with Lorraine Walsh and with Supervisor Eeny. And they both expressed reservations to, what should we do? Well, I I I would hope that we could reach out to our elected representatives and I'm going to be sending. An email out to the community tomorrow, just making them aware of what's going on, because I think that they, if, listen. I understand the argument about zoning and. You know, how it perpetuated in a lot of ways. Racial and economic disruption, but it is what it is and we are what we are. I also understand that the Electoral College was put into place to enable slavery, but we still have the Electoral College. What happened is, you know, millions of people in in Mamaronek, thousands of people bought homes. Under a certain set of rules. And that was the set of rules that they bought the home on. And now they don't even have input into the rules that are going to govern their property. And their neighbor's property. So they should be made aware of it. The, to not be made aware of it, and, you know, it's just not fair. And, you know, I, listen, I could be wrong. At the end of the day, maybe it'll it'll bang housing prices down and, you know. A a new utopia will break out, but I, I've been. You know, alive 60 years now and it's always been my observation that the people on the bottom don't get help unless you really try. Send a program that actually tries to help. So, yeah.
I spent a short time on the Westchester Assembly Delegation Call and it seemed like. The legislators from our area only want. 100% affordable housing. They may go for the 20 unit per acre, as long as it's 100% affordable housing. They may go for the accessory dwelling, as long as it's 100% affordable housing. I think that's what they were pushing. There was some housing. Advocates who didn't care about the 100% affordability and they were really giving them a a hard time. But anyone speaking about 100% affordability, they were, they were, you know, they were agreeing with.
But I, but I think if you're talking about ADUs and you're talking about 100% affordability. That's pretty self-limiting because it requires an individual homeowner to. Tie their property up with a federal program.
Yeah, wow.
Or a state program.
All renters, all renters in Westchester County are required to accept Section 8 tenants. It's already, it's already kind of the law that, you know, you can't refuse somebody in Westchester County. Based upon that that they're getting help.
Absolutely, but if you enter into an arrangement by which you. Go through a formal process for building an ADU under these proposed laws. Then you would also be renting out your affordable unit. Through like the town of Mamaronek's agency. So I'm just saying that's, it's a, it's a, it's not. It's not just like having a two-family house and you put the, put it on the market and see who comes. It's a, it's a more formal process.
Well, yes, and and I I think that that's a process we should go through. Because what's going to happen now is every time somebody wants to sell their house. They're going to add an ADU. I mean, even if they don't want it, even if they don't want it while they're living there. It ups the price of the house. You know, selling a two-family house. Why not add and get, you know, you you put 100 grand in and get 200 grand out. It's just, you know, it's it's basic economics and if I figured it out, believe me. There are people a hell of a lot smarter than me who are going to, you know, really know how to do it. So I, listen, I I just, I I I think that this is. Very dangerous for us and, you know, I I I implore anybody who's listening or anybody on the board. So please reach out to your elected officials and let them know how you feel. And I I think, you know, it behooves us to at least say, you know, you got to give us time to think about this at least, you know, and here it is. You know, it's almost the end of February and this could be law April 1st. And it's a mighty big change. So that's my two cents on that. Trustee Natchez, do you have somebody here from the community refrigerator?
Yes. Dan. Solderer is in the waiting room or what are, as in, you know.
Yeah.
Attending.
Got him from those panels?
Yeah, from those panelists.
He's up.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hi, thank you so much for for allowing me to speak today. I'll keep it short. Yep, thanks for giving me the pleasure. So. Let me just pull up. I just had a couple remarks to make. So my name's Dan Zouter. I'm a former Mamaronek resident. From the age of two and a half to the age of 18, 11 Avon Road. And I'm a proud graduate of Murray Avenue School, the Homics and Mamaronek High School. And I currently run a nonprofit called the Mott Haven Community Fridge Network. That I started at the height of the pandemic when I was a Bronx middle school teacher. Our goal is to get fresh food to families that other kinds of food assistance don't reach. We distribute produce through a network of volunteer drivers who make deliveries of rescued produce and other food essentials to community refrigerators. Sidewalk, public access friendly fridges filled with free food available to neighbors in need. Operating under the guideline of give what you can, take what you need. Since the start of the pandemic, I've been lucky to have received the support of many local residents. Who've lent their time and their minivans to distribute food to communities in need. In fact, as of the last count, we have over 200 volunteers. From Larchmont and Mamaronek in our database that have already signed up to work with us. And it's been a great way to reconnect with my hometown. I think it's a testament to the strength of civic service and democracy in Mamaronek. It's refreshing to see such thriving civic service during such a trying time. And given the recent impact of the hurricane on Mamaronek and the degree to which community resources like the CRC have been stretched thin. A number of volunteers have suggested that putting a community fridge in Mamaronek might be a nice way. To provide emergency food relief, provide sustenance to many struggling families. And galvanize even more community members in the fight against food insecurity. And I know that organizations like the LM Hunger Task Force already do an incredible job of serving our community. And I'm also confident that we could help partner with existing organizations like the LM Hunger Task Force. To help them do even more to serve the community. I'm also confident that an initiative like this would help galvanize community members in a new way in the local fight against food insecurity. Grassroots by nature, I think that local families, religious congregations, we just had a day of service with Larchmont Temple. We have another one coming up with them soon. The Homics just came out every single Saturday to our Bronx parking lot in February. And they're coming out in the next two Saturdays in February as well. Schools, youth groups, restaurants and the like, I think would be thrilled to come together in service of this cause. We've already worked with so many different organizations in the town. Like we even did a community fridge painting in the Chico's and another one outside of the Grange. I can only imagine how much this engagement would increase if we were to consider putting a community fridge within the community itself. We'd be able to greatly expand upon the beautiful impulse for civil civic service that already exists and is carried out every day in Mamaronek. While many community members have already volunteered with us, I just wanted to take the opportunity to formally introduce the initiative to the Board of Trustees. In particular, I'd love suggestions about potential locations. Location is a very important factor for a successful community fridge projects. Ingredients that can help success are high foot traffic, high visibility, easy access to those in need. Another important ingredient to consider is built-in volunteer support or placing the fridge in an organization that already benefits from a high number of engaged volunteers. Some community members have suggested that a great location might be the Mamaronek Firehouse. I wondered what the Board of Trustees thought of that location idea, or if you had any other suggestions about the best way to introduce a proposal for a location. To close, I'd be extremely grateful, I already am extremely grateful for allowing me to speak today. And also for just the spirit of civil service that's produced amazing volunteers for our organization, over 200 to date. And its open-mindedness to considering novel approaches like this one for combating longstanding issues such as food insecurity. I know that a community fridge would be a wonderful way to reach more people in need and I'm so thrilled that. I get to speak about launching this project in my hometown. So if anybody has questions or anything of that nature. Please don't hesitate to reach out to me directly. My email is dan, that's D A N. At Mott Haven Fridge, M O T T H A V E N F R I D G E. at Mott Haven Fridge, M O T T H A V E N F R I D G E, M O T T H A V E N F R I D G E dot com. My phone number is nine one seven four nine seven two five one four. And I'm very much looking forward to the discussions and collaborations that might emerge from what I hope is the start of an extremely fruitful dialogue. Um, I also do, I think, have other people, um, listening in. If you want to call, if you want to hear some testimonials from other people, if not, it's all good, um, and happy to answer any questions from anybody who has them.
Uh, tha- thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you very much for your volunteer efforts. Uh, I did talk to the Larchmont America Task Force about this, and honestly, they did have reservations. So I, I would suggest that you reach out to them and, you know, talk to them about their reservations and how we can possibly get past that, or, because, you know, I, I wasn't able to tell them, you know, as, as articulately about your program as obviously you can. Uh, so I would suggest that you, you reach out to them and, uh, see if, if, if we could work in tandem with them, because that would make it a lot easier. And also reach out to the Community Resource Center because they might have a, a good idea about location, especially when it back up and running.
Um, uh, I've talked to the Community Resource Center, and Randy is very much in favor of this project uh, as are many others in, uh, the area. Uh, it has been very successful in many communities. Uh, I think it augments the food pantry. Uh, it does not replace anything. Um, and I, this, this would be available twenty-four seven. Uh, and people can bring what they want when they can and take what they need when they need it. Uh, I think it's a great approach to life. I think would, you know, um, I think the firehouse is a gr- is a great area. Uh, uh, when it, if it wants restored. But it, it should be in an area that's visible and easy to get to. I think Dan outlined that. Um, I think Dan can reach out to, uh, you know, uh, Larchmont Running Task Force, but I think the concept is something that we should be backing, and we should try and be helpful to be implementing. Um, it, it's, you know, it has been proven to be significantly helpful to numerous areas. And I think that's, this is the type of thing that is, you know, a very easy thing to implement and doesn't require a, a lot of, um, you know, a lot of work.
No, I, I'm not against it at all, Dan. I, I just, uh, and I also encourage you to speak to the Larchmont America Public Task Force uh, and state your case as eloquently as you just did, uh, and listen to their concerns. Uh, you know, because, you know, this is what they do, and, uh, you know, that they are obviously a stakeholder here. And, uh, I, 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 I think, you know, they, they'd be happy to hear from you. Uh, but, uh, Dan, Mr. Zaruda, I, I really appreciate it, and I'm sure we'll, we'll continue this conversation in the future. And, uh, thank you. What are you teaching in Bronx?
So I was a teacher in Mott Haven. It's the poorest congressional district in the U.S., or at least it was as of a couple of years ago. Um, and I was teaching there until recently. I left my job in August to do this full-time because I felt that I could serve my students better by making sure they had full tummies because you can only pay attention to a Zoom screen so much when the rumbling of your stomach is too loud to pay attention to the lesson in the classroom.
That is, that is, that is a good point. Thank you very much.
I think somebody else's hand is, is up, but I don't know.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan, for noticing. Um, my question.
Uh, yes.
Do you partner with other municipalities?
Because we do. Yeah, we, we actually, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, please.
Well, well, we, we just launched, um, a partnership in, in collaboration with Councilmember Kevin Riley and with the River Bay Property Management in Co-op City. Um, it's the largest commu- it's the largest housing project on the planet. Um, and they're able to have a community fridge. So I do think that, that a, a village like Mamaroneck would also be able to have a thriving community fridge. We do it in partnership with the council member with, with the property management, um, and with other, with lots of other institutional forces. Right now, we're partnering with the Central Synagogue and with Fifth Avenue Presbyterian Church to think about putting a community fridge in Midtown Manhattan. Um, so I do think that there's a lot of buy-in for this, for this, um, idea. Uh, yeah, thank you for the question.
Also, of course, that's so public, but this is the only public body you figure you're trying to work with. The, for public bodies, you know, we, we need to figure out how, how our partnership would work because that's why my first question was, if you pointed before, that'd be useful. The second one is.
We haven't done it with the Board of Trustees like this before. No, this is.
Municipality or, the second question is, I, other than location, what, 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 what are you looking for really from the municipality? Because there are all those partners, but that's key.
Lo- location is, is the biggest thing, is, is, is the buy-in and, and, and support of, of a location that would allow for electricity hookup and high visibility, um, would be, would be our ask of, of the village.
Okay, that's very useful.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
There, there are ways around space, space, um, things the village can do. We have a village attorney, of course, I'm not gonna. But we, we've dealt with, uh, you know, space, uh, using space and that. If it's more than that, then that requires other partners. So I think we'll continue this path. Thank you. And, and congrats on the, on, on putting this effort together and keeping it running.
Thank you, Victor. If anybody else has questions, feel free to email me. Again, it's Dan, D A N, at Mott Haven Fridge, M O T T H A V E N F R I D G E dot com. And my phone number is nine one seven four nine seven two five one four. I know there are other volunteers that are listening in, so hopefully they can send in their own statements of support. What's the best place for people to email a statement of support or something?
Mayor, all, all one word, mayor and board at V O M N Y dot org. Once again, that email is mayor and board at V O M N Y dot org.
Is it an A N D or an ampersand?
A N D.
A N D.
Okay, great. Mayor and board at V O M N Y dot org.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay. All one word, mayor. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jerry, Jerry, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Spalzino, uh, or Mark, have we heard back from the Attorney General?
We have not.
We have not. All right. Okay, so we'll wait on that. Uh, flood mitigation advisory review of flood plan, flood plan development permits. Just, just before we get onto that, at six fifteen, I'm going to move to stuff that's on for the regular meeting. So have we set up a, a tickler to send, uh, stuff to the flood mitigation advisory committee? How are we doing?
Oh, I haven't. How do you want to do it? Whatever you want to do, we'll, we'll, we'll put in place. But we haven't yet.
Well, we, why don't we just set up, you know, uh, in, in, if anybody needs, you know, uh, to build anything in the flood zone.
Okay.
Make sure it goes to flood mitigation advisory committee.
What do we do? What do we do with their comments? Give them back to the boards?
Yeah, give them back to the boards, just like it was a citizen's comment.
Okay. We can do that. We are quite capable of doing that.
I never doubted you.
Gary, the question I, I think was, at one point you thought you needed a resolution from the board. If we don't, we just can go ahead and do it. If we need a resolution, I've provided one.
Yeah.
Why do we need a resolution?
Yes, as long as, and, and the only, the only reason I brought it up is as long as it's not something that is going to potentially impact us because those comments are going to be binding as a board, um, in litigation, which, you know, happens frequently, uh, for us. Then if it's a process that you guys want me to, um, consider and follow, I can do that if it's just a process.
I think, I think the process is, is more important.
Okay.
You formalize it, th- the more you, you have potential litigation. This is just become, then it gets distributed, people look at it, uh, they can make comments or not, that's up to them. Uh, they're not a land use board. They don't hold hearings, you know, on it. Um, you know, it's simply to get any input that's irrelevant.
As long as, board, you know, for the whole board, as long as, uh, FMAC knows that these are going to be sent to the other boards like a resident comment or a neighbor comment, then, then there's no issue. I, I don't see an issue, but maybe Mr. Spalzino does, but I don't see an issue with.
Bob, you want to weigh in on it?
I think that's fine. If there's no binding effect, there's, you know, there's no Article seventy-eight from them or anything else.
And citizen input.
Or ZBA, as the case may be, to weigh those comments.
Okay, good. We get, we'll start that. I'll talk to, uh, I'll talk to Frank T tomorrow morning and, uh, Brittany tomorrow morning.
Right. Uh, one H, uh, Board of Trustees Direction, the use of prior traffic study data, da, 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 for Waverly, Hoyt, Mount Pleasant. What, what, wasn't, uh, Matt Camodi supposed to be doing some of the lights over there?
Uh, yeah, we, uh, he looked. You know, he, he looked at, uh, uh, the board asked if we could do a, uh, all-way pedestrian phase. Uh, and I had him analyze that. There was a question about timing it with the Hoyt Avenue signal, uh, which would also require, uh, uh, timing it with the Mount Pleasant Paulstead signal, uh, because they are on the same traffic controller. Uh, but, uh, Mr. Crumby looked at several options. Uh, first were they, what called a seven-second lead pedestrian interval, a ten-second lead pedestrian interval, and a, a twenty-six second always stop.
And one of the questions that was asked that was, I, I think, uh, forwarded to Comedy is, and at two meetings ago, I think you said they were looking into whether or not the existing traffic controllers would allow or, you know, could be implement a four, a, a four-way pedestrian stop, if you will, or however you want to put it. I called four red lights. But, you know, so the question is, is, is it feasible? That's the first question.
The answer is that Waverly, yes. It has a
Okay.
modern controller, saying that the DOT uses.
Okay, okay. So now the question is, you know, should we, you know, should that be something should be done? I, I, you know, I, I've read the reports. I've read all the material. There actually wasn't anything about why we should not do it.
Well, I, I think what, what, uh, Matt mentioned was it would, you know, increase the, uh, the signal timing by, uh, forty seconds or something like that. So that would have a cascading impact on other signals along the corridor. Uh, one of the things I am asking, uh, to also look at is possibly uh, finding a better method for the village to uh, time the signals along the entire corridor, possibly with dynamic uh, timing. So it could be, uh, different at different points of the day. Uh, and they are giving, going to give me a proposal to do, uh, that analysis. The initial indication is probably yes. Uh, there are a couple of other, uh, issues at play. Uh, you know, what I've been, uh, and what I wanted to discuss is if that is a possibility. Uh, one of the items that we've talked about with the board in the past is, you know, we have that neighborhood stabilization fund uh, that was set up with the Transit Oriented Development District. Uh, right now, there's one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in there. Uh, if this is something that we could use to enhance that corridor, uh, to make it more pedestrian-friendly, uh, is that a concept the board would like the village to pursue?
I, I think anything we can do to increase the pedestrian friendliness and safety, something we'd be thinking about. You know, uh, but a lot of the things that have been suggested didn't make any sense um, for, for additional safety reasons. Uh, I'm less concerned about, you know, as one member of the board, uh, a seven-second delay in traffic and try, as opposed to trying to speed up moving the traffic. I think that's part of the problem that we, that we have, and that's what happens, you know. Uh, the other day, it was crossing and almost hit by a car because they didn't want to yield. And by the way, we need to repaint the crosswalks because they're all gone now. You know, when they tarred the road, it's all, everything has been, you know, erased. Uh, so we need to repaint them if that's possible. Jerry, is that something we can do?
Mamaroneck Avenue?
Mamaroneck Avenue and Waverly, yes.
Yeah, so they just, they just painted that. Yeah, we will. We, we can repaint them.
Yeah, uh, because if you go down there, you can't see it anymore.
Yeah, I think they used, uh, uh, watercolor paints because, uh, they were painted it a few months ago and, and it's gone. So we'll have our guys do it.
I, I think it was more that when they put the new tar down on Mamaroneck Avenue, that just was tracked by, you know, all sorts of traffic to erase it.
What, what happened was, um, I got them to spray the crosswalks as soon as possible. I wanted it done that night. They ended up doing, uh, three days later, I think it was a Monday or Tuesday night.
Okay, whatever.
It's horrible. So, so I'll get them to do it again, or we'll have our guys do it.
Okay. If that would be possible, that would be great.
Yeah, we can do it. Sure.
And.
Thank you. Uh, sorry, no, go ahead.
Yeah, so, you know, part of this discussion was, could we use traffic study, traffic info? We already had to get some answers. So clearly we were able to do that, which was good. Didn't have to wait for a traffic study. And I guess, you know, our schedule is, we need a decision in time for the county to implement it in June, right? I mean, that's when.
There, there are traffic signals, so we can do what we want with them. The only signal that we do not own along the Mamaroneck Avenue corridor is the signal at New Street. Uh, you know, the county has, uh, offered to, you know, turn that signal over to us. Uh, you know, I, my understanding is it has the latest controller as well. Uh, and we could have, uh, a care to an inspection of the signal. Uh, if we're looking to enhance greater coordination among the signals, there may be an advantage to that. Uh, as long as the signal's in, in, in good shape. Uh, I just lost my train of thought. I apologize. Uh, but, uh, you know, that's an option. We, we'd like to, uh, see if there's any board appetite for, you know, possibly accepting that signal if it's in, uh, uh, proper working order as well. Uh, I do have a, uh, a report that they're working on. It's still in draft format, so I don't have it, uh, complete yet. Uh, there were, you know, a number of, uh, low-cost recommendations and some high-cost recommendations. Uh, in addition to the greater coordination, I was also asking for some suggestions on, uh, flood mitigation for those traffic signals. But I'll, I'll, I'll get that, I'll get into that when I have a, a more formal report.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Establishment of Village Self-In insured Supplemental Income Fund for volunteer firefighters.
Yeah, at the last meeting, you asked me to reach out to our insurance broker, RJ. Uh, I, I had a conversation with him. Uh, he is collecting, where he's asked for some, uh, census information on the, uh, fire department. So I'm working with the chief on, on getting that. Um, we also discussed, uh, this theory or concept with our auditors, and uh, they presented a approach to us uh, where we could possibly use some of the, uh, ARPA funds or other village funds to, uh, uh, set something up. But, uh, you know, we can, uh, that's what we want to, uh, you want us to take a look at further. We can ask for a, a more formal report on that from them. I think they're going to be, oh, actually, they're going to be at upcoming board meeting uh, also, but when, when they do the presentation of the audit.
Yeah, March fourteenth. Yeah.
I, I, I think that we're, you know, all in favor of doing it. We just need to know specifics. It'd be nice if the.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're currently, we've been asked to collect data by our insurance broker, and I've been coordinating with the chief. I'm collecting that data.
Great. And the chief knows the, the reason for the collection of data, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. My concern, Mayor, my concern was that we probably have twice as many, if not more, volunteer firefighters than we do employees. And a regular annual fee for that insurance could be significant as opposed to setting aside and supplementing what they would already receive from the state. That's what.
Right. Well, that was the plan, right?
That was the plan. That was the plan, but, but the insurance brokers, you know, may want to sell the annual reoccurring plan. They may.
Okay. Well, whichever, whichever.
Yeah.
And even with, you know.
I'm sorry, Dan. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, you, even with the number of volunteer firefighters, I don't know if there's a distinction between the interior and exterior certified. So that's a, that's another issue that, uh, may not be able to have that level of granularity in a proposal.
And, yeah, you could also, you know, not be an interior firefighter, but, you know, really hurt your back, uh, pulling hoses off the truck.
That's right.
Uh, thank you. And we look forward to more information. Uh, Wetlands Amendment.
Uh, wetlands amendment, we're gonna wait for H C Z M C to come on the twenty eighth. Uh, bus shelters, Jerry, uh, I I know. You're gonna reach out to the county, is that right?
Yep, we're trying to get the bulbs straightened out this week. We'll reach out to the county and see what we can't do it for President's Week next week.
Okay, uh, my my suggestion is you you give a call uh, to Connie Green O'Donnell. Uh, at the town, because when we did this in the town, uh, her and I were dealing with the county and she has the county. Uh, contact information of.
Okay.
And you know. She she had a good report, she she might be able to give you somebody uh, that would put you right on the scoreboard.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, six twelve. Let's go to the stuff that's on for regular meeting. Oh, just as a point of information. Uh, I just received information that Governor Hoagul has extended the emergency order, which allows us to meet like this. Until March sixteenth, twenty twenty two. That we're just in for more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You will. Uh. All right, first on for regular meeting, uh, emergency repairs one sixty nine Mount Pleasant. Uh, I hope you've all had an opportunity to either go to one sixty nine Mount Pleasant, which is otherwise known as Old Village Hall. And look at some of the decay, neglect, damage. Uh, that that building has suffered uh, through neglect over the uh. Century. Uh, when you look at. I you know, when I saw pictures of the cell where uh. Prisoners are kept, and I you know, I'm afraid Amnesty International uh, is gonna be knocking on our door. You know, and and also with the 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 conditions under which our police department and our judges are building. Department labor under, it's it's disgusting. So Jerry, with that prelude, I I leave I leave it to you.
Um, for quite some time, a lot longer than I've been here, it seems like we have deferred maintenance on this building. Um, and I wouldn't venture a guess, but. Uh, there are portions of this building. Uh, that look like have never, that haven't been addressed and have been deteriorating for over a couple of decades. And what's happening now is it's impacting the work of the 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 work of our staff, the health of our staff. As well as the ability for us to continue to maintain this building. Uh, and potentially intercede before we have to knock it down. The extensive work that's required. Was eye opening when I started having uh, Mr. Jeff on, who is a person of many talents. But um, has a very keen eye for construction and the experience that that the. Um, he has gained over the years. So. So the roof, so the building has significant roof issues. It has significant building envelope issues regarding the brick. Uh, the windows are um, a mess that's easy to see from from the from the street. Um, we require um, repointing throughout the out the whole building. There are issues with the stairs, the treads, uh, the blue stones. And there's also issues with doors and with hardware throughout the building. That's just the exterior of the building. There's additional damage caused by the poor condition of the exterior now impacting us in the interior. So much so that I had to move a department head out of their office. Because the condition in that office was no longer. Safe. Uh, tomorrow, we will be setting up air quality monitors eighteen throughout the building. So that I can zone in on areas that can be occupied and areas that cannot be occupied. Um, as many of you know, I work at that building three to four days a week now. I want to start to get this process under under control. And what that's going to require is a significant amount of money. Um. Not much else but money, truthfully. Um, and um, I put the emergency order or the emergency declaration. To, of course, gain everyone's attention, but also allow us to continue to do things as we find things. Um, that are safety related. Um, that we need to pay for without the arduous uh, bidding process. What we do have is a proposal from uh, Milcon Construction, which works with um. Uh, basically like a uh, a national uh, vendor. Um, program, I think it's called, what's it called, Dan, sort of?
It used to be called US Communities, it has some bizarre new name now, but yeah, they work, uh, they've worked with a company called Garland. And they uh, did the rehab work at two thirty four Stanley Ave.
Right, so we worked with this company before, um, they did uh, over half million dollars worth of improvements. And similar type work at two thirty four Stanley. And now it's really time for us to focus on one sixty nine Mount Pleasant. And so what we have is a, um, with five alternates. We have a proposal of just over one point seven million. If we're adding a twenty percent contingency, we are about a two point five million dollar project. In basic terms to try to save the building. I couldn't even begin to think about relocating all of those employees in that building. Uh, because there are judges, there are jail cells, there are police officers, there's a police equipment, there are guns and rifles. There are um, uh, mountains and mountains of uh, file cabinets, paperwork, and. If the building deteriorates more than it is. Um, we would have to go buy a new building to put those people in. Because we couldn't build one fast enough to be able to continue to provide services for the village, especially emergency services. So. The pictures are before you, the reports are before you, the mold report is before you. And the proposal before you, and so what I need is um. For the board to be aware that we're going to move forward on this project and start to do the improvements. To save the building, unless, of course, the board decides. It's best if we go buy another building, put those services in that building, and we knock down this building. And I don't think that that's. Something the board wants, but I could be wrong, because I'm usually wrong. That's it, Mayor.
Well, they have the choice, did we save the building or we knock it down? Uh, it's on for the regular meeting. So the question here is, is it fine to be on for the regular meeting? Yes, me too.
Yeah, I I would say it's, and it's not a binary choice, because there's quite a process for knocking down a building that's eligible for the National Register. And this building has been determined eligible, so it's not, you know. Have that flexibility.
Right.
Um, and so, you know, I, it's sinful that it's gotten this far. You know, it's 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 it's, um, it it didn't need to get this far, but that's not. That's not today's discussion. It's been getting this far for a very long time. And um. You know, it's, it's with preservation, it's called the mushroom effect. Sometimes to find mushrooms in the building. But um, I just just want to make sure that we're not using any state or federal funds for this.
We're not using any state or federal funds. Um, when we want to start to improve the building, changes, make changes. We could go after, right now, we need our funds or future. Uh, you know, future bonding uh, to start to improve um, and make the make the improvements. Um, but I I was remiss also, and thank you, Nora, for clarifying that it's not an easy process to knock down a building. We have a team now, Frank Tavolak, so building inspector, he's a former builder. And and Jeff on, we're very dedicated to trying to to um, make these improvements, especially since. It benefits our our employees, of course, the extension is if it benefits our employees, it benefits the community. But we have a strong team now that we can um, work on these projects in-house. And continue to watch over them, just like I I and and Mark Ferraro and Mike Iannarelli. Um, and James, of course, watch over the sewer project. We have in-house staff that's willing to take on extra responsibilities. To make sure that um, we can get this building cleaned up and livable or workable in the future.
Okay.
Two questions related to what you just said. One is, just to pick up the the issue of funding. Uh, this is something we could bond, I I assume, that's where we're heading. And probably in the meantime, as as we move forward, we we'll use uh, some fund balance to cover, is that the plan?
That would be, uh, uh, the the fund balance use, Victor, would be of of the board's decision, yeah.
But but now, you you can move forward with that, essentially, essentially, you're more or less. Uh, uh, authorizing or expecting to to use at least the three hundred. Uh, from from our fan balance, you know, in a, you know, very short time, right?
Very short time.
How about how about the timing of the other piece, the million seven?
So what I'll do is um, um, I'll get back to you on the timeline for the balance of the work. Um, but we need to start sealing up the building, and that's the first priority.
So for the base work?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay.
Base work.
So then, this and then the second question that also relate to what you were just talking about is. Uh, you need, do you need it? Um, permits, state, local, uh, county permits, do you need any permits for this?
Our building, and it's not on the register, it is eligible. Um, and so everything would have the. The eye to make sure that we're not, you know. Destroying any chance of putting it on the register in the future. As far as permits, we don't need anything from the county. What we do need is, um, and we may, we may get into a little bit of a bind with this. If we make any interior alterations, which we don't really expect to do, um, the um. Uh, Public Safety Agency, I can't recall what it is, that oversees the police department. Um, would be um. Would be advised, we could, and I don't know if we have to, but we could. If we make any interior changes, have to contact the Office of Port Administration. But I don't think so, uh, because we're not really going to do any alterations. We are going to replace doors. We are going to fix walls, um, but it's all gonna be in kind stuff.
Okay, so if I may then, to follow up, as we're all here now, but this may drag, I don't know for how long. Maybe inclusive whereas that whereas this work may require, you know, the the um. Getting uh, letters of approval, permits, et cetera, and that the village will will pursue that and obtain those permits.
Yeah, we will.
Before before doing, before undertaking any work, just so that the board's just these is essentially not just. Ordering you to do this regardless of permits, but so that there's no uh, no interpretation of that nature, right?
I.
Go that way, but it's better to be safe. And then something on the resolve, the same line that you would, you would get the.
This is, this is emergency work.
Yes.
Right, so. I I I.
Sometimes needs.
Yeah, I know, just let me finish what I'm saying. Right now, we don't know that there's any permits that are needed. Do you want them to begin searching out whether there's permits needed before they start the work?
No, they know, they know what they need to do, I'm just covering. He's saying that if anything is required, that they will, that they will obtain it before undertaking any work.
The resolution has the catchall, which I put in most resolutions. That the managers are authorized to take the administrative acts necessary to effectuate the work.
That's on the proactive, I I was, I was looking something specific on on. On essentially that we're not authorizing this regardless of anything that is never quite, that is, comes up as necessary, let's say you get a. You you do find that you probably need to check with somebody, I'm sure you'll do it, but I just wanted to end the resolution.
Yeah, it's appropriate, it's it's appropriate, I'm not concerned about it. Do it, do it, repointing the brick, uh, replacing the windows with in kind, um, doing the the roof, um. That's our target, uh, but but that's appropriate, what what trustee to for is saying is appropriate. I don't have a problem making sure we have everything we need from every agency that we may be um. Uh, that we may require some kind of communication with, that's fine.
It's easier to do it ahead of time.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, I'm okay with that, because I know the scope, Jeff and I and Frank know the scope of this work. Um, you know, like the back of our hand.
I know Jeff has been, his, I mean, he's really got a sense of how to take care of an old building, which is. Which we're very lucky about, I mean, and um, you know. To the extent that any changes are made, it's just good to document them, really with photographs, you know.
Okay.
And um, you know, the only, you know, the thing about buildings like this is that. The more, sometimes mortar is used now, and the mortar is too strong, and it causes other problems with the brick. So making sure whoever is doing the pointing knows how to repoint. Historic buildings is really important, because you don't want, the mortar is supposed to give away. And sometimes they point it with a concrete that basically destroys the fabric. So we spend a lot of money and then have to replace bricks, we don't want to do that.
Yep, and we'll use our drone to document the condition of the entire building, all the way around and all through it.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I I took a tour of the of the building. Uh, three weeks ago at the invitation of the two justices when I was first appointed. And you'll notice, uh, item N is a result of that visit, the um, the requesting of we establish a a trustee liaison. Because it was obvious to me that they felt isolated, cut off, and not communicated with and disrespected. And I could see they were working in a dump. And uh, somehow, uh, we haven't been paying attention. So that, I would like that to be considered also, I mean, I, how this got this far. And it's a surprise at this point, is stunning.
Okay. Uh, we'll get to that on the agenda, when we get.
And to lose point, we should make sure that the judges are looped in too. I mean, to lose point, we should make sure that that all the staff that works there is looped in, because they're gonna know better than anybody else.
All right, we we got a lot of stuff to cover.
So to finish my point, between now and the and the regular session, can Dan drop something Jerry's comfortable saying we'll pursue those. If anything comes up, you'll, 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 you know. Find those, get those permits, get those letters before proceed when you work. And. And in the result somewhere, you've done this many times.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you said, whereas uh.
We need to move on, just get it done.
Yeah, and just just one one point that's important, Lou, Lou, we all toured that building, I did it six years ago. It was appalling there, we've attend, made so many attempts to to go the new, the building and exploring it. Unfortunately, doesn't, you know, there's this slow government, it's something that is so pervasive, let me tell you, you can't realize. But probably what we're doing today is the right thing, just moving.
I I know, yeah, I mean, I I, you know what nose blind is, that's that's what I think happened, I'm no, and I could smell it.
All right, we gotta move on. Uh. Declaration of two thousand and five Chevy Suburban is surplus on for regular meeting, so selling an old car, everybody okay with this?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, public safety infrastructure grant on for regular meeting, uh, this is getting money for public safety.
Correct, yeah, twenty seven thousand dollars, uh, the police, and this is a hundred percent reimbursable, the police department wants to spend. About thirty five, thirty six thousand on a uh, a key fob, act, a controlled access system for the police department.
Uh, engineering and design services for Holstead Avenue on for regular meeting. Uh, Jerry, uh, this is something that's also.
You forgot D, I think, Tom.
Okay, Grant, with New York State Division of Homeland Security Emergency Services, open space study on for regular meeting.
Uh, this is a grant that we got from uh, the state to conduct a open space acquisition study to. Maintain enhanced buffers between the Shell Drake River and the industrial area.
Okay. Uh, everybody's arrived with that? That's the grant, uh, engineering design for Holstead Avenue on for regular meeting, this is another item that's been kicking around for a hundred years. Uh, Holstead Avenue is now a village. Uh, street, used to be a county street, uh, it used to have a trolley on it. When they took away the trolley, they didn't pull up the uh, trolley bed or the trolley tracks, they just uh. Asphalted over it, and so some. asphalted over it, and so subsequently, uh, it it has always, uh, been a problem, a street of disrepair. Jerry, if I'm not wrong, this would comprehensively fix the street, or this is study to comprehend, we'll see what we have to do to fix the street.
It is. The the objective is to have full with re, uh, reconstruction of the paving of that street, including all the improvements that are required by law, such as the ADA handicap ramps and any kind of curbing that potentially could be, uh, replaced at this time to make the improvement. Um, but full with full depth, all the way down to the, uh, to the base course. And so that's the objective.
Where to where? Holstead Avenue.
From Mamaronek Avenue to the Harrison Line, Lou.
Got it.
It's just under one mile.
I'd like to point out that Jerry has been very successful at getting, uh, by competitive bidding, getting, uh, about a hundred and
Yeah.
Forty thousand dollar reduction in
Hungry.
The cost.
Some people are hungry to do the work, so that's good. I'm glad.
Yeah.
Some people have a lot of work, so.
It it proves the point that competitive bidding, uh, you know, proposals is is exceedingly helpful these days.
I agree. So we're comfortable with Kellid Sessions. We know their, um, operation. We know their principles. So we would ask at the regular meeting to approve the Kellid Sessions ninety-six four fifty.
Kellid Session has been, uh, a very good salt for the village. We appreciate their work and, uh, some of the, uh, strains. Uh, purchases sanitation vehicle on for regular meeting.
Uh, this is a scheduled replacement of a sanitation vehicle. Uh, the quote expires uh, basically in two weeks, so we'd like to, uh, move this forward. It's, uh, off the, uh, source well contract. It's, you know, basically the same specs as as usual, twenty-five yard rear packer, low entry. Uh, so we're looking to move forward with this.
Is this in the capital budget plan?
Yeah, this was one of the items in the capital budget plan.
I think it's replacing a twenty-one-year-old garbage truck, which is
The the challenge for us is that we won't see it until, um, uh, probably November, December of next year, not this year.
Yeah, four hundred and thirty-seven day lead time right now.
Yeah, yeah, so we're 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 behind, uh, on on trucks, but but we have a great staff at the mechanics. We have fully staffed at the mechanics shop now. So we'll keep, uh, we'll keep our old trucks limping along as best we can.
Okay, thank you, and thank you to our mechanics for doing a difficult job. Issuance of RFP for design services for window replacement of a building on the national register, uh, of the store place. This is Stanley Avenue, uh, Community Counseling Center.
You know, we've been working to get quotes for window replacement. It's going to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars, which means it needs to go out to public bid, uh, which means we need, you know, uh, our, uh, engineering architectural drawings. Uh, we're requesting authorization to issue an RFP, invite firms that have a specialty uh, in historic restoration. There is a list that trustee Lucas provided to me a couple of years ago of, uh, uh, firms that have been successful recipients of, uh, I think Preservation League uh, grants, and I have experience with three of them. But I I'm fairly confident that any firm on this list who has experience with historic restoration would be capable of preparing, uh, the plans that we would be looking for.
Can I ask, what what? What is the estimate of cost difference between historic windows and regular windows?
Uh, we didn't look at that because it is on the national register. We wanted to, uh,
I know what it is. I know what it is. So so we're at eighty thousand, we're at eighty thousand for reproduction windows and, uh, one sixty for the, um, historic, whatever the terminology is, replacement windows.
In kind, but they're
Yeah, almost double.
But the, um, I think the in-kind windows are thermal. I'm not sure that the first replacement was thermal. I I don't, I think the in-kind
That may be the case. You might be right.
And I think because they're metal windows. I think you'll find with the, um, one sixty-nine building, because they're wooden windows, with the exception of the arched windows, they're gonna be much easier to find. It's hard to find vendors who do metal windows.
Okay, my 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 question is, how how are we, how are we benefiting by having these on the historic registry? I mean, if we had to spend ninety grand more for the roof, we're spending eighty grand more for the windows, so we're at a hundred and seventy grand.
I'm not sure we spent ninety grand more for the roof, Tom. I think I I I'm not sure, because I think actually the way they did it with using the architect they used, he was able to save some money because he was able to figure out a less expensive repair than what the previous vendor had wanted to do. Um, and I think basically, you know, our consultant, we have the, our grant consultant um, has, we haven't been applying for historic preservation grants, and I think that's something that we should ask them more about. I mean, I think that's a good, that's a, that would be a good thing to pursue.
Yeah, I I guess, but it it, I just see money going out and not any coming in. We have these buildings that are ancient and are turning to sand, and it it it's harder and harder to
Well, and I will say they're ancient. They're turning to sand because we have not taken care of the buildings.
I understand, but now it's getting more expensive to take care of it.
Right, but it's it's never more expensive to repair it as you go, and that's what, you know.
But we didn't do that.
And maybe we aren't a candidate for, you know, having a lot of real estate, but we're a village that has a lot of, um, has a lot, you know, we're, we don't have centralized buildings.
Did we ask to have it, does it get it into the store place? We we did this to ourselves?
We do this to ourselves, yes.
Alright.
Okay. Alright, we gotta move on.
Which one are you up to?
Hotel occupants.
Okay, sorry, thanks.
Okay, th- this is renewal of hotel occupancy tax. Uh, the village gets a three percent tax on every hotel room. Like it's rented after night. We have, I believe, the Mamaronek Hotel and Vincent's Motel, and, uh, we get, you know, some, a few thousand dollars a year. Oh, you didn't know what the top you had around, what?
Twenty.
Twenty thousand dollars a year, uh, for enacting this tax and, uh, I guess pay it on an hourly basis, some of these places. Uh, so this is on for the regular meeting. Uh, any questions or concerns?
I don't have a problem with it, actually. I think it's good, but why are we not, why are we not collecting the same tax from A or Airbnb, et cetera?
Good question, if if you could keep track of Airbnbs. But I I don't know if the law allows you to, because I think you have to have a motel license, uh, that, or or a hotel license, but it, it obviously is a good, uh, question for our leaders in Albany.
Well, can we ask, yes, go Matt to, uh, and Bob to look into that and find out?
We can. I don't think the law is caught up with Airbnbs, Dan, but, um, we can look at it. Sure.
Okay, I I've heard both arguments from different people, both ways, that it is covered and isn't covered. I don't know. I haven't done the research, but I I think that's something that would be helpful.
Yep. No problem.
Uh, then you gotta chase it, but, okay. Relocation of mural from high school on for regular meeting. Nora, myself, Lou, attended a meeting uh, with members of the historical society, members of, uh, lodge month, uh, village board, members of, uh, town of Mamaronek Board, and the high school is, uh, doing a STEM building and, uh, which is, you know, a good project. But they have these six murals, eight murals rather, and, uh, the historical society, uh, wants to preserve them. They, uh, they follow the, uh, literature of, uh, James Fenimore Cooper, uh, prominent, uh, village of Mamaronek resident for some time, uh, who many say is the, uh, the founder of the first American, real American novel. And, you know, it it, so they they have to move these murals and try to find, uh, suitable homes for them. Uh, the town of Mamaronek has, uh, gracefully offered to take most of them. Uh, we talked about taking one and trying to put one in our courtroom. Uh, and Nora made a good point that they should probably be grouped together because they were, uh, kind of done in a, in a in a fashion where you you can get the whole tableau of, uh, Mr. Cooper's work. Costs a lot of money. It it, this isn't gonna be a burden on the taxpayers. Uh, the historical society has has to raise a minimum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and they had about a month to do it.
Yeah.
So I don't know, uh, if they made any significant progress. Uh, so this might be a pig in a poke. Uh, and it might not come to fruition, but I I think we should, uh, at least offer to take one in. Uh, if if the need arises.
And back, and and Nora made the point, and it was very, very well perfect, because altogether, these, uh, paintings make sense individually. They're underwhelming, uh, some of them are underwhelming, and they may not, uh, they may actually not have a great, uh, a great elicit a great reaction. So, um, if we do take one, we should do, I'm hoping we could have representations of the other, other, uh, paintings and and an explanation about what this means to Mamaronek. Uh, because, uh, that's, it would only be of value to us. Museums don't want it. It's not great art. Um, uh, it's only of value to Mamaronek because it's our history, and it's our history because it's Cooper. And it's about the stories when, you know, Indians used to live here, uh, some of them, and it's about the school in nineteen forty-one. And 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 the way the paintings were were, uh, were displayed, and the generations of of Mamaronek residents who viewed them. So there's, it ties a lot of things together, and that's the, that's why they're worth saving, I think, but that, uh, that's why two sets.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, most museums just don't have the real estate. It's four, it's eight large murals. It's a group of three and a group of five. And, you know, ideally, they would be kept together, but if they can't be kept together, they will be documented, so that if you're looking at one, you'll get the, you'll get the information about the others, and you'll get, you know, you'll get the local history, and I think they have huge local significance. But, um, we have, you know, it's, it's not, it's not something most museums can install, and it's not something that lends itself to a traveling exhibition, because they need to be mounted in a fairly permanent way.
Okay, so what what we're asking for here is to put this on the agenda, to pass a resolution saying that we would, uh, if necessary, and if, uh, you know, the obvious is, is it a question of tax there, we would make a home for one, uh, in the courthouse. So that's on for regular agenda. Is the board okay with that?
Yeah.
Sure, we should, we should probably discuss it with the justices also.
It's awkward. All right, scheduling a fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget work session on for regular meeting. Uh, let's just look, look at these right now. Jay. Okay. Does everybody see? And Nora, I know you sent an email today. Could you just remind me of it?
March thirty-first.
Yes, my, it's, it should be, it's either Tuesday, is it Tuesday or Wednesday?
No, March thirty-first?
I didn't write it, but I know you were right.
March thirty-first is a, the Thursday.
Yeah.
I think the memo says Wednesday. Now I So we're gonna do it Thursday? I mean, I guess the question is, are we doing it? Is the date right or is the day correct?
March thirty-first is is a Thursday.
Right, but the question is, do they mean March
I understand. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't, you were just saying, it should have been March thirtieth?
I followed the resolution from twenty nineteen. I was asked to follow that resolution, and it was a Wednesday, so it should be March thirty.
Okay.
Is that fine with everybody?
Yes, actually, that that works for me.
The zoning board is, uh, zoning board is the thirty-first on Thursday, so that doesn't work for us. We may be forced to start to meet in person again.
All right, Victor, you saying something?
I was saying a couple of things. First, well, probably on that note, I think this, this meetings are really important. I think regardless of of the of the requirement of of the meetings, meetings law, open meetings law, et cetera. I think that we should, we should, uh, tape them and and make them available in soon, since we have the technology. That's number one, but my real substantive comment is, you know, I've been at this for a few years, five now, six. And if I recall, two years where we we had probably, uh, not as smoother, but but a clear vision was when we had a meeting. I think probably Jerry was one and probably one with the, one of the prior village manager, where we, where we have an earlier meeting. And we more or less discuss what's, what are the big goals? And with that meeting, then, then the manager and his department heads get get together and and draft that early budget, which under this schedule is March eighteen. But we were not, we will essentially with this format, we will just see it without any, any of our prior input. And that was probably last year, because it was, we were under the gun last year for several reasons, but the year before that, we probably did these early, the first meeting, that that, and I I recall ha- having that meeting before. So my suggestion, number one, is to have an earlier discussion or a preliminary discussion, um, probably in two weeks. Be so that you have time to to include those comments. Otherwise, it becomes more, why do you do this? Why do you do that? And if not, it's 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 more of in line, and you will have all the answers, but we will not have any. So I do think it's, 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 it's really important to have one meeting before that on the overall broad goals. That's number one, and my second observation is, again, learning from experience, is that we only have one meeting at the end, and it says if necessary for income. I think what I've learned is, is learning income and those, it's 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 probably the most important. It says, it says here, it says April twelve. Tuesday, review budget, including revenue and expenses if necessary. The the revenues is always a very, very important meeting. Even if it's, if they're small compared to the tax that we get, but it is central. So my two recommendations are have one meeting before the March eighteen introduction. And two, also, um, bring up the issue of of revenues, and I think that one we did, we did incorporate last year. Last year, we had to incorporate a meeting, so those two, those are my two, my two requests, other than than keeping, you know, taping this with that that is, now we have the technology.
Yeah, I I I think what we found in in years before was trying to discuss revenues before we had uh, a full view of what was coming in and what was going out, was trying to shoot, uh, you know, a a moving target. And i- if I remember correctly, you know, that was some of the difficulty was the board, some board trustee members, uh, anticipated, uh, great shortfalls in revenue, which then weren't, uh, forthcoming, and, uh, you know, it 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 ended up, uh, when the numbers came out, that we had actually, uh, gotten in more revenue than we had anticipated. So I I think the problem with revenue is you don't have the numbers early enough. You don't have a complete picture. You know, you can, we could talk about ways and strategies to raise revenue. We could talk about other ways to to to, uh, have non-taxable revenue increases, and I think that that is, uh, a good conversation to have. But I I think from my memory, my experiences, is that the the numbers aren't always available. And while it's, of course, very important, you know, it they, it's just, uh, shooting in the dark. And it it's almost a waste of a meeting to do it too early, but I think to have a meeting earlier to talk about budget priorities, I think that that is a useful exercise. I think that the budget should be, you know, a a aspirational goals of where we want to take this community. And I I think that, and I talked about that, uh, last year at the end of the budget process, that we should be doing that, you know, looking at, you know, where where we want to go and what we want to do. And so I think I I agree with that part, but I I think that we should, you know, ask for recommendations on how to increase revenue. But, you know, give them an opportunity to get all the the, uh, numbers in before we, uh, make revenue projections that then become moot as, uh, information becomes more available. And I would suggest that perhaps And I would suggest that perhaps uh. Starting on the twenty-eighth. At the tw- yeah, the twenty-eighth we have meeting, uh try and start on the twenty-eighth earlier. And do a budget conversation then, like maybe take an hour uh before and do an hour on budget. Philosophy, budget goals, budget uh, you know, where we want to go as a community. So that we don't have to schedule another meeting, which always becomes very difficult. And uh, you know, just leave work early that day. So would you guys be amenable to having a, a meeting on February twenty-eighth earlier?
If I may.
Yeah, sure.
Uh I'd like to suggest we do the twenty-third, the twenty-eighth is a regular meeting, you know, uh longer and longer, let me finish, please. I'm, I would suggest that we do the twenty-third, what I, I think Victor's uh comment about uh doing income isn't, is important, I think your comment about goals is exceedingly important. But the one thing that doesn't appear on the schedule unless I'm missing it, is the capital budget. Which also should be part of where we are on all of this. Um and, you know, we're starting a little late, uh the reasons for, but I think, you know, we need to. You know, we, I know everybody takes this very seriously, um you know, staff takes this very seriously. But I, you know, just rushing through it. Doesn't give us time to reflect on where we are. So uh I agree with you, I think we need a, at least one more meeting, I'd like to suggest the twenty-third devoted solely to the budget.
I agree, we need one more meeting, but I can't do February twenty-third. I'm sorry.
Can we do earlier on the twenty-eighth?
Four o'clock?
Victor's always says he has, he's teaching that day, I don't know if you can.
Well, twenty-eight is a Monday.
Yeah, can you do?
I could, I could do, yeah, I could start at four.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, and, but we do, I, 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 I second. Trustee Natchez is, uh we need, we need to talk about the budget. Uh capital budget also early on, there's so much work and the staff, you, you've been tremendous, so it, it, it should be now a simpler. Kind of uh looking at the, looking at the graph, actually, ki- kind of moving one year ahead, so it could be, we could fold it into one of the meetings. And also, I do take my point very strongly, Mayor, that we need to do two things. Because revenue and expenses, you gave me a counterargument, which is that things were not very clear, I think that only applied for last year. Unless I hear from Augie, and I don't think I'm gonna hear from him, that he has now any issues having, figuring out where his revenues are gonna come from, or, or, or Jerry, I'm sorry. I didn't want to put Augie there, because really Jerry is, is the budget officer. But I think it was last year where we were struggling, but now. You, you will be able to, to, to work with the numbers early on, it was specific year, so I do, I, I do strongly. Urge that revenues be, be brought up earlier, I, I.
All right, well, 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 just to, to your point, why don't we move revenue to March thirtieth? If, if they can have it, and do the harbor master on April twelfth, just switch those days.
Mayor, is it possible we can do capital on March seven?
March seventh?
March seventh.
Capital.
Yeah.
Because we don't need, we don't need capital involved in our regular general budget, because we have a. So, so the difference, the difference in this process is that I and my department heads, especially Dan and Augie, but other uh key department heads. Are thinking about increasing revenue and new areas and talking about expenses all year long. So it's, this is not, the dates are just for. The discussion regarding the, 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 the public uh viewing and the, the board to talk to us. But we have a great, we have a great handle on our budget, we have a great handle on our capital budget.
You do, you do, li- listen.
We can talk whenever you want.
Hold on, I hate to interrupt everybody, we had something we were gonna do at six fifty, so let's, let, let's batten this down, okay? February twenty, we, we're adding February twenty-eighth at four PM budget discussion before regular meeting.
Big picture, right, big picture.
Big picture.
Okay, I got it.
Okay, how about uh, like I suggested, uh moving the expenses up to the thirtieth of March? And moving Harbor Master to April twelfth? Does that satisfy everybody?
Yes, with, with that, the twelve, it's Harbor Master and other necessary, you know, the, the usual final look at.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. With those changes.
No, and then, I'm sorry, and then Jerry added March seventh for capital budget.
For seven, I think.
Okay. Okay, if you can, then, then don't worry about it.
For another check schedules day.
Let's try and do that, okay.
All right, so with exclusion, excluding March seventh, with the, with the changes I delineated, which are February twenty-eighth, four PM, we're, we're gonna do big picture before the regular meeting.
Yeah.
And then. March thirtieth is gonna be budget review, including revenue expenses, uh and then. April twelfth is gonna be Harbor Master, uh Parks and Recreation and other items if necessary. I make the motion that we approve the schedule.
One second, can, can we add to the March thirtieth? The, the, the capital bu- budget review, is, isn't, is it double?
Jerry was saying he doesn't want to do them in, in the capital budget in the regular.
On the thirtieth?
I know.
Because it's part of our, so it's part of our schedule.
I, I can do capital whenever you want, if you want to add it. Add it to the, to the end of a regular meeting, I can do that, I have no problem, I can do capital anytime.
Fine, fine.
Don't worry about it.
But the, and the other, I put is that we, that we, that we, we tape, tape our discussions, I think they're very important.
Yeah, that's fine too.
All right, sure, of course.
So include that, that, that the board will, will record this in Zoom and make it available to the residents.
Uh huh.
Yeah, uh with, with all those caveats, I'd make that motion, somebody second, please.
Second.
Or call roll.
Trustee Young.
Yes.
Trustee Natchez.
Yes.
Trustee Lucas.
Yes.
Trustee Tefor.
Yes. Mayor Murphy.
Hi. Okay, now we have an executive session, uh I'm gonna make a motion that we go to executive session for the following items, item A. Uh discussion of the village manager complaint against the board of trustees pursuant to one oh five one D of the New York State Public Office of Law. B, uh Garden Road is anticipated that a motion will be offered to executive session pursuant to one oh five one H of the New York State Public Offices Law. Item C, litigation update, it is anticipated that a motion will be offered to executive session pursuant to one oh five one D of the New York State Public Offices Law. To discuss McCrory versus Village of Mamaroneck, Stuart Teeger versus Village of Mamaroneck, Cindy Goldstein versus Village of Mamaroneck, et al. And item D, uh retention of search firm for full-time village employee is anticipated. That a motion will be offered to enter to executive session pursuant to one oh five one F of the New York State Public Offices Law, la la la. Uh and I make all those motions, I need a second to the motion, second.
I know you did, I'll amend.
What, Victor?
A, eh we, there was another item, because we, we received a communication that we're gonna consider. So I think that's not one oh five, somebody help me, I think it's another.
I think you want F, I think you mean F, we have to add F.
It, it has to be more than just litigation.
Yeah.
It's the broad, I don't, I don't have it in top of my head.
It's one oh, it's one oh five. One F.
Oh, one oh, like, like D.
In addition to D, which we have, we add F.
Okay, with that amendment, I make the motion, I need a second. Second, all you call.
Trustee Young.
Yes.
Trustee Natchez.
Yes.
Trustee Lucas.
Yes.
Trustee Tefor.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
Hi. All those that should be on the first call, please go to the executive session. We are still technically in the work session, uh we have come out of executive session. There was a vote taken in executive session, and the vote was to hire an attorney, uh Sackeloff Stern. Uh to represent Trustee Natchez in potential litigation arising out of an EOC complaint, and that passed four to zero. I need a motion to close the work session.
So moved.
I'll second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Trustee Natchez raised his hand indicating aye.